Good evening, welcome to a special meeting of the Wellington Board of Education. It is Tuesday, September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five. We are calling the meeting to order at six thirty-four P M. We invite you to join us for the pledge for the agents.
I'm going to visit to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will begin next with the presence to speak if you're here in person, go ahead and raise your hand if you're here. That's virtually, I'm gonna raise your hand that way. And we always welcome comment questions from the public, of course. Anybody here in the room? Okay, declining. And anybody, that's all us. Cool. Okay, then we shall move on. There will be another opportunity for them to speak at the bottom of the agenda. We are an old business, we're gonna start off with some class size discussion regarding grade four. There was some recent discussion about that from some members of our public. And it came up when we were considering what to do with a vacancy in the third grade for this particular school year here in the fall. So. It seems we've got a document here to give us some information, you wanna walk us through that, it's, you can read it.
So first, you can't really have a conversation if you can't afford it, right? So this is your kind of financial capability overview of yes or no, right? So there's a lot of moving parts in this because of the additional outplacement, so here's where you're at. So Donna has a final number for end of twenty-four, twenty-five year. And she believes it's a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, right? You then have in your non-lapsing account as of today, you're at a hundred and fifteen thousand. That is after applying the hundred thousand dollars to the outplacement already, that was in your twenty-five, twenty-six budget. If you take the money that's in your twenty-four, twenty-five end of year at this point. And you then move all of those funds into your non-lapsing account, if you vote to do that. You'd have the two forty-six, two hundred and forty-six thousand. You do need to take out the money that you already agreed upon as a coverage for the third grade teacher. And that was the overage. So your bottom line for your non-lapsing count, if you put that one thirty-one in, would be about two hundred and two thousand dollars, right? She has run the earliest medical insurance balance I've ever had as superintendent. Taking all of our new hires and everything to see where that number was at. And I told you that could be eighty thousand in the hold, it could be eighty thousand above. And it's in our favor right now, which is great, and that's just the medical insurance line. So eighty thousand of the good is a good problem.
How does that fluctuate through the rest of the year, like how does that?
So that includes one placeholder as part of that money, which is typically around twenty-five thousand dollars. So somebody, I've had a couple of resignations, like currently. If somebody comes in and they take insurance, that number comes down if the old, the person that left didn't take insurance. But if it's a wash, sometimes this number could go up. If you had someone took insurance and the new person coming in waves, you save more money. So again, then you think about family insurance, you're in that thirty thousand dollar range. Takes a couple of people and that number dwindles fast. Do you have a buffer? My response is yes, okay. The C grant is something that, it's a special education expansion development grant. I will be honest, this is in, this was approved in legislation for this year, next year. The limited information we have on it right now is unbelievable, to be honest with you. Nobody knows, and I'm gonna show you, like, this is the slide from shipment of how we can spend it. In their legislative update, tier-two interventions, academic and behavioral interventions, hiring sellers and special education teachers. Para educators and behavior reading specialists who work directly with students, equipment purchases and maintenance and curriculum materials. Now, looks great, right? But you cannot supplant. Which means if it's in your budget already, you can't use these dollars to then use it as an offset. And you can't use it for outplacement. So we got forty-seven thousand dollars, which is standing up. No district is very sure how they can do this. Special education teachers are a shortage area. There are big districts that get two and a half million dollars. I have no idea how they're gonna spend that money. If they can't, they have to hire new people, like positions that don't exist. So I pressed S D E. And I got a response back from both the special commissioner and another director. Basically saying, you know, we're, information's coming, we're gonna be doing an F A Q, it's moving soon. So I can tell you, I've asked two questions of them. One is, because it's tier-two, and I posed the question. I would like to hire a long-term sub for fourth grade to provide intervention. They've provided small construction, kind of laid out, you know, the scenario for them. I have to wait for the F A Q, they said, well, make sure we answer that question when we are writing the F A Q, so they don't have it out yet. So I don't have that answer yet, along with other districts. The other thing I opposed to them was, is it truly supplant? And I said, supplant typically means when you get grant dollars, if it's in your budget already, you can't use it to offset. But what I, what I, the bottom line is, they don't want you lowering your amount you're spending for special education. Leave another outplacement, we're spending more. So I don't know how that money's going to be used in. We may be able to use it for this, but I, I am not gonna tell you it's a guarantee. If they say no, and you truly cannot supplants. Marsha and I are talking about, you know, she's got her shop endless, like, I could buy some testing materials. I could do some training for staff members. I could hire, I could purchase the, the phonic ear systems that we refer to replacing classrooms, which is expensive, things like that. Because that's a lot of money that might be, have a very, very limited scope.
We still have our Wilson teacher, okay, so that's in place.
It's in the budget, and if I can't.
Yeah. Supplant it.
So I would love to use this, this money just to offset the cost of a special education teacher that's currently in the budget. And then use those funds to then, you know, that we had the budget to then cover the outplacement. It just, it's not good. It's just, we don't know yet. Like, there's two grants out there that, we, we, Wellington has a hundred thousand dollars, two grants right now. We have no idea how we can spend money.
I have a question about that forty-seven, if you were to apply it to the fourth grade person. You mentioned it would be interventionalist, but it's still, would he or she still be a classroom teacher?
That's the question, is it has to be, it's, it's, that's the certification. Because there's not intervention folks out there, right? There's not a lot of special education teachers out there, there's not a lot of reading teachers out there. It's, it's an issue.
Can you put that slide back that was on the shipment one?
Yes.
Please.
Yeah, and it's, this is, I can show you this really fast if you wanna see it. So this is their, this is their legislative update, this is the section on it. If you're interested in doing some of your own review, Public Act twenty-five sixty-seven, section seven, it's where this is at. And they say you can't supplant. C S D E is supposed to be giving us some information on this. They talk about, you know, that they're, how they calculated how much money each time was gonna get, and they're fully funding the grant, which. I love the thought process. But it's not really fully funded to grant if your scope is so narrow, you can't spend it on what, what your need is.
Right.
You have another outplacement, if we can't spend it on that, it, that's just baffling to me. And they go into the, what you can spend it on. And I think this is the last slide, is that, and you, sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to see the one before that, so it says. You, you can spend it on. Para educators.
My argument to the state is, they're not a certified teacher.
Right. But it says you can spend it, right?
Yes, you can spend it on a special education teacher, which is a shortage area. You can spend it on a para educator, which, that's not what we're looking to fill. You can spend it on a behavioral or reading specialist. But if those people, any of those positions are already in your budget, you're not supposed to use those funds towards that.
So, so a long-term. Okay, I got it, sorry.
The long-term, if they allow me to hire a classroom teacher and that, they're gonna say it falls within this tier-two window. We could use these funds, I just don't have that answer for you tonight, and I don't know when I'm gonna have it. They had, I, I asked what the timeframe was for the F A Q, and I got a very flat, here's the statute, here's what was happened. So I don't have that information. This is why I'm being so cautious too, is that. There's reporting on this, and they are, it's clearly in the legislation, you are gonna be penalized if you misuse, quote-unquote misuse this month. So if you use it in a way that's, it's not one special education related, according to legislation, you're gonna get held hard. Not only paying it back, but they're talking about two-fold.
Kate doesn't have opinions on this, or?
Nobody, this is shipment, like shipment read this and was like, they don't, they don't know. I think C S D E was giving this in, in all fairness to them, right, late in the session. And they were given this big bill, now they're trying to figure out, okay, what does this mean, how does, how do, what guidance can we give? And there's not a lot at this point in time.
Is this the money that was held up and then all of a sudden it was released again?
This was in the Monster five oh oh one. This is the thirty million that everyone was saying, great, this additional thirty million in special education. It's, it's hard. The good news is, you have forty-seven thousand dollars. Bad news is, I can't tell you how to spend it, and I think it's a big gamble to, to bank on this money in the fourth grade position.
Right. You know what's sad about it is, we're just coming off of COVID and ARPA money. This would be a great transitional tool to kind of get us back, you know, coming, weaning away from all of that COVID ARPA money.
This should just say, for special education funding for districts. And a district has to identify what that is, that's not what it is. So, so that's there, I just, I'm sharing with you. Now, the next piece that you need to consider when you were thinking about this, this position. Is I had my meeting with Marsha and Penny and Donna about the additional outplacement. So you can see the actual cost there. Our outplacement actual cost that we know today is over a million dollars for seven outplacements. The transportation for those individuals is three hundred and thirty-one thousand. We budgeted for transportation, three hundred and seventy-four. That's good for us, and the reason why Marsha found savings there is that. Where the additional outplacement's going and continuing to call it districts, she's got right share in saving us big bucks. I can't guarantee that's going to stay that way, because if there's an issue on a bus and they need the transportation by themselves, they get it. But that's a, that's a good thing. The outplacement tuition that we budgeted, that's in the V O E budget is three hundred and sixty-two thousand. And then we're planning for four hundred and seventy-six thousand to come from excess costs. And the hundred thousand that you are applying for non-lapsing funds, you're over budgeting special education for outplacement tuition and transportation, fallen. By seventy-nine thousand dollars, right? So what I tried to do at the bottom for you is just say, here's how you pay for these things without freezing the budget, and can you do, consider the fourth grade position? Medical benefits could cover the outplacement tuition, it's a, it's a wash, it's eighty for eighty. If things stay the same. Right, you could just, and I, I've said this before, is you can leave some of these until the year, knowing that. If the insurance, the insurance benefits balance changes, you need to make sure you have enough non-lapsing to cover the balance. If you do the position, and if you cover the outplacement tuition, that makes sense. I'm gonna say, I don't know what, I told you, I don't know what to do with C three at this point, but I think it'd be very risky to bank on it right now. If it turns out that you can use it for that, great. That's really good. And you'll even have seven thousand dollars left over, because I've calculated that's about forty thousand dollars. For a long-term sub from October sixth to the end of the year. And the last thing is if C can't cover that fourth grade position, non-lapsing funds. You could use that as the, you know, as the, the fund. And that would bring your non-lapsing fund balance to one sixty-two, three. So realistically. You have funds for this position. What you have to understand is that the eighty thousand goes away to medical benefits. And you have to cover an additional eighty thousand, you're one sixty-two. Take away eighty, you have an eighty thousand dollar balance in your non-lapsing fund.
Eighty-two, it's seventy-two.
Yeah. So it's, it's. It's doable. But there's still risk, that's what I'm telling you, if somebody else moves in tomorrow with an outplacement. That's the risk you have, I have to be willing to take. I think it's also a contract you could break, but you, I think that's also.
Have you found someone for the position or posted it?
It's posted.
Anybody apply or?
Yes.
Well, I think if, if someone moved in an outfit tomorrow, we would. Be asking the board of finance for.
Mm-hmm, that's up to you, I'm just thinking about these seconds, yeah.
Especially with the cuts we made last year.
I would support that too, when I, I think that. Few years ago, when we had outplaces that came that we didn't expect, you never expect them, but. You were very creative and figured out ways to balance the budget, but then when we went to say, okay, these outplaces still exist. And then everybody gave us a hard time about our budget. So going to the board of finance shows that need, that these things are happening and we're not, we're not making them up there. There's a need out there.
You also have to realize that the seven that you have, this could change with any of our students, right? It could be a student that suddenly needs a one-to-one. You probably have more volatility in the students that are outplaced just because of the, the position they're in, right? But those students that change in services to a two-to-one para, or. No one-to-one para to a one-to-one para, or to no specialized transportation to specialized transportation. That's where the volatility is in your cost. And I can't guarantee these close names, all I can guarantee is the dollars that are there. And obviously, you know, I recommend that you take the whole one thirty-one, that's from the end of twenty-four, twenty-five, and you apply it to your non-lapsing.
Which we do next meeting. Yeah.
She'll have, she'll have your end-of-year report done, and I'll have all of the justifications for each improvement.
Is that one thirty-one included in the two oh two?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
That's how you get to it.
Okay.
Yeah, the one thirty-one is the one thirty-one plus the one fifteen. And that brings it to the, to two forty-six, and then you have to take out the balance for that third grade teacher that you put in the difference. And again, other things might come back positive, I can't guarantee they won't. But that's where your budget is today.
So to make, to move forward with this, or to at least vote on it, you would need a motion. You use the forty thousand two hundred from the non-lapsing fund now. Because, or would you float it in the budget and figure it out later?
You could do that, and, and you could do it the same way you are, you did the third grade teacher, with the understanding that.
Might have to.
In the end, I'm gonna say your new balance of your non-lapsing account is a hundred and sixty thousand. That's what I would just, how I play it out. So everything falls apart, and all of their accounts can't, don't work, you can still pay for it. But at the end of the year, if you're like, hey, we have, you know, we were able to cover the third page position just because of the way things played out. Like Donna told me today, we have fourteen thousand dollars in interest, that's not reflected in the non-lapsing federal fund. I haven't seen that yet, I, I wanna see it on a report, I just heard verbally, but that's not a small amount of money.
Does this person get benefits?
No.
No, as a substitute.
Long-term sub, that is not for the full year, did not get offered benefits.
That's why I save so much money.
And I'm. The, the way the policy is written, it says, a long-term sub is a B A step one, unless another contract is agreed upon with superintendent. I have never, nor have I ever heard of a superintendent in Wellington doing anything other than a B A step one. So like.
Or above, that would be the minimum, would be.
No, that's it.
That's capable of that.
No, that is it. That's, that's what I, exactly what I'm saying, it's forty, it's forty thousand dollars, B A step one. And that might turn some people off, I don't know, that's not in the ad. But that's, I. Again, you saw the difference in the third grade teacher, you could suddenly get somebody that's at ninety. I don't wanna cover ninety thousand dollars.
I move that we hire a fourth grade long-term sub. Community most not.
I would just say a year for the.
For twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Do you wanna see a draft schedule? We put something that's raw together, we sat down, I sat down with fourth grade teachers.
Yes.
I know that was something that you were asking about. And when I say draft, it's gonna be based upon data, this can change. But this gives you a sense of. This is a, a, a fourth grade, I'm just sorry, I'm just trying to get something on my way here. This is a fourth grade schedule, and I can actually blow that up even bigger for you.
And you would have three classes?
No.
No, you'd have two classes.
So the two classes will remain, they both have to keep their home rooms. And basically what that third person becomes is they become a co-teacher, an interventionist, a support person, and they could do all of those things. And what we sat together was, they looked at some of the raw data and said, this is how we think it would work. And it would work throughout the day, so arrival, read students assist with morning work, you'd rotate classes, right? So there's morning work heavy on, because they're, again, they're following the same schedule, it wouldn't be a change in schedule. Because of special education needs already across the school, but also because we can make it work in this model. The morning meeting, they rotate between classes, if they had a need to pull someone out of morning meeting, they could do that. The math win block, what I need, which is the old learning lab, the intervention group mixed grouping with both classes, based upon data. So they now have a third teacher that would allow them to pull smaller groups. Or just that math block. During the math block, the regular math block, they would provide modified tier-one lesson with skills based upon the data. So they do some pre-assessment data, or there's, you know, four students that are really struggling. And there's sixteen students that are just need a little extra support, and there's ten students that are above grade level. They break those students apart and provide the support that's needed, and that's what the intervention, or that's what the, you know, the, the tier-one lesson looks like, it'd be based upon the data. The specials block is when the kids are out, so they're co-playing with the classroom teachers. E L A, they're co-teaching, and they would rotate classes based upon against student data and need. It could be that, you know, one class is struggling with a writing lesson they've done, they're gonna provide some extra support. And then the next week, they're gonna spend more time on the other class. It's not gonna be like Monday, Tuesday, you're here, Wednesday, Thursday, you're here, it's gonna be based upon the data, which is why the co-playing is so important. Lunch is their own lunch, duty is recess duty, E L A win. That's the learning lab, again, so intervention group, same thing as the math, they can do intervention group. And that puts more adults into smaller groups, again, I mentioned feedback, this is about feedback, more feedback. And then the E L A science and social studies block, that's the C K L A. Content block, and so they, just like the first grade and second grade ran the skills group and had great success in it last year. That's what that is. They would run the skills group based upon the devil's data. And then math centers, it's support based upon student data, so it just gives you a picture of. How that person would be used, and it's highly data-driven. It's not making copies, it's not floating in the back of the room, it is literally taking kids as often as possible in small groups.
I think you have a real rationale for an interventionist here. For that, for the special ed money.
I don't, that's the way we, why we frame it this way, and, and not because of, like, there's a need there, right? And so with the need, it helps our intervention folks already. Because if you think about two teachers plus two interventionists of math and E L A won't get hurt in the path. Now you add another person into that mix at that block. You can get more feedback, right? Again, I gave the example of one to seven versus one to fourteen versus one to twenty-one. How often am I gonna see, talk to a kid? Every seventh kid, every fourteenth kid, or every twenty-first kid, so.
How did the teachers feel about this?
When I first shared the idea, it was like, how, how would we make that work? And we had a really good, just, I just laid out the details of, this is what we're thinking, I can't guarantee it's gonna happen. Where, I explained the, the kind of para support versus a classroom teacher versus breaking into third group, three teachers. They're very excited about this because they saw the success that the younger grade levels had when they did the skills group. And to be honest with you, you need people to do the skills groups. And have them available, that person all day long, like. John just missed this, but if you can sit with John for ten minutes, he's gonna be with us tomorrow, he's gonna get it. This person allows that to happen. But they know. This, these two classes, they're their classes. This person helps with grading, this person will be responsible for, you know, running some groups, but they're giving the feedback to the primary classroom teacher. They're also gonna do some planning, it's not like they walk out the door and they're like, oh, two teachers, you get to plan the day tomorrow, I'm just gonna help you do it. That's not, it's, it's, it's developed in a manner that it's like three teachers within two seconds. So I think they, they support this term.
Was there any discussion amongst the current staff about separating the whole grade based upon student ability? So that the two classroom teachers would take a group, and then this person would take a third group? Or did you have the classroom teachers more sticking with their own students, and then this new position would combine children from both classes?
It's more that model, it's, and it's based upon whatever data, and the reason why is because they're running the same schedule at the same time. If they can, the cut, and I'll give you the example that was given to me in C K L A, if they do a kickoff fifteen-minute, twenty-minute mini lesson in the block. And then when they break out and the kids that need more feedback, those kids are assigned now to a teacher. During that block of time, and they're going through that, the rest of the lesson in the smaller group. And then each teacher's assigned to a group. What they wanted to avoid was making, you know, having it so that it wasn't clear who was responsible for who at what time. That was a lot of the conversation, like, how do I know, who's, I, it's going to be flexible based upon data. But it's gonna be like six to eight weeks, let's check back in, end of a unit, where are we at? Jen's got it now, she can slide to this group, we don't, you know. It's, it's gonna be based upon the data. And I, and so, again, sorry, who was in the meeting? Math coach, literacy coach, both classroom teachers, myself, and Lisa. I left special ed out of it for now, just because I didn't wanna add another mix to it, the thought process is. That all of them would be working on this concept together.
So that planning time was really important.
It is.
Yeah. Even more so than just two co-teachers, and I mean, you have the third person with that much responsibility.
Correct. So I just, I figured, we developed that just to give you a picture of what it would look like. Hope that helps.
Yeah, that's very helpful. Did anyone else have any?
Samantha, you should be able to unmute anytime you want to.
I'm very good at this.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we'll, we're prepared to vote, Sam, if you can. Jump in, that would be great.
Yes.
Okay, hi.
We got you.
Hold on.
Hold on. There we go. Sorry. Hi.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second, we've had some discussion about adding this position, um, favor, please say hi.
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 Thank you, all right, we have passed that through, we look forward to adding your number to our staff to help out that fourth grade class as fast as possible. Okay, thank you for that work, Bill.
Yeah.
And I look forward to seeing how the staff and students and their families still have to go. All right, next we're gonna talk about the educational specifications regarding school building projects. If you're just joining us, we have specs created by the former Board of Education Group that um. Recommended a school building committee four years ago. Um, and so we are looking at adjusting those and editing and changing them, we recently put out a survey. Asking folks for some input about what is important to them, what they think we really need to focus on and think about. So we have both results to go over tonight, um, and then just kinda see where we're all at with that. And we have already recommended for select, and they put together a. A new school building committee and I believe they have that underway, if you're interested, we'd need you to just contact.
They're actually leaving now, I believe. I think so, I don't know.
They did have a celebration first, I, I don't know. Meeting, yeah.
Okay.
I have, I, I have several things that are like in my brain for this agenda item. If you want me to start, the first thing is this, the survey feedback.
Sure.
I have information on certifications, cause that was one thing talking about the um. Like the automotive and I got information from the state of a number of certifications for that. Um, and then uh, I have information I sent to you on the charge. Cause you want to talk about that and that might be, I think it's kinda related to the specs, but that might be a different night, that's up to you. Um, and then the last thing was Rusty's ad specs thinking about, do you want me to start blending those into? That, our prior document. So those are the things that I had in, in my brain on this list, okay?
Would anyone like to go off of a different list? Okay, you're perfectly fine with your.
So, I mean, let me start with um. And sorry, I'm, I'm cloudy, I'm coming off of having COVID and I've been, this is my first day back, and so if I'm like. Spending a little bit, you can feel free to stop and ask questions. I will share with you. So we'll put this online and what I tried to do is just create a snapshot for you, these are all of the checkboxes that were on there. Um, in that survey. And again, for folks that are listening, the purpose of this was not to identify cost, it's to go. What is the level of interest? Uh, for certain items, you, I don't think you would consider it if the support wasn't there. And so these are the items and some of the items may get dropped. In the future by a school built, building committee because it was, if it was expensive, okay? So this is the list of items and what I'll tell you is there was around two hundred responses. Um, there was about, um. There was about, I wanna say sixty comments, but some people wrote the comments twice. Someone could have taken the survey four hundred and fifty-five times, okay?
We don't need that.
And you can hide the camera if you want.
Yeah.
And so I wanna make sure that. You understand, like, this is general feedback, they didn't have to log in, there might be some repetitiveness in here, I didn't see that in the comments. But that's there, okay? So here's the bar graph that comes off of the um. Form. And so I added in here with working plumbing, electrical and automotive on the left side, those are the four things, all right? Um, and then for whatever reason and Google, um, Google threw us for a loop here, Brendan and I had to research this because. Ample community space on the bottom is the fourth from the bottom and the bottom. It's not on our checklist that way. And so we had to Google that and we found out that we think so many people were hitting the survey at the same time. It was slowing it down. And it says it can create an internet problem for the survey and it created a second one. Uh, the validity of it, I don't know, so all I can tell you is those might be duplicated, but it is what it is.
To make suggestion, ample community space.
Well, it's not a suggestion, it was one of the checkbox.
It was one of them.
Yes, it was one of the checkbox.
Okay.
All right, so I guess my point on this page. Overall, good support across the board, relatively consistent, the, the ones that fell, in my opinion. Class size of nineteen to twenty-one and class sizes of twenty-two plus, anything that's under thirty percent is what I'm saying foul. Those are low, there was not a lot of support there, for those. Um, and anyone who was saying twenty-one in their comments was really about like, hey, if it's more of a lecture type style class. They were more okay with it, but not across the board. Um, the other item that dropped was the turf fields, not a, a huge ton of support there. Um, another item that dropped was geothermal, it was just under the thirty percent. Um, and not to say like the solar at forty percent was a real high number, but. It gives you a sense, is there like great support for this? I will tell you that great support looks to me like onsite field space for all of our sports at a hundred and thirty-eight responses. People want all of our field space at the school. Maybe that's because they're driving the soccer field in River Rose right now, I don't know, um. But I thought that was a, a good thing. Um, contemporary building security was very high. Natural light was higher than I expected it to be, so you can see the, the. Supports that are there, you know, there's some that were in the thirties as far as the industrial arts con, things, um. But I, I wanted to highlight the ones that were not so popular, if that makes sense. The other thing that I did for you in the comments, I just pasted them all in, so you could see, I did not doctor these one bit. Um, if you see a, a comment that says um, response paper copy. That was Brenda taking a paper copy that she got and she entered that, so on our spreadsheet, we can see what was entered and we can match to what we got. We didn't get many paper copies, so if you see that, it's not that we were doing something. Second thing, themes. There is a significant theme, in my opinion, of what I will call industrial arts. And home act. Think about culinary, personal finance, sewing, greenhouse, robotics, digital media coding. That stem room that you have, steam room that you have currently in your spec. I think would be utilized to fill all of these things. Um, it might not be an automotive course or a woodworking shop. It would be a. Kind of combination of all those things. Um, the other thing I'll share with you that about this. Is while I'm talking about that, is I got the data on. The cert, number of people certified in the state of Connecticut for that, the industrial type thing, it's a shortage area. It's listed this year as a shortage area, there was um. Oh, I don't remember what it was, I think there was twelve hundred people with the certification. Um, and that's a shortage area and the secondary, um, I asked them about two specific certifications. That could be used for this, the other one only had two hundred people certified, so that was even worse. My vision of this, if you were gonna do this team type thing is you would hire a classroom teacher. And that person would then. Get support, you're gonna have front motors come in and work with the classroom teacher to show them how to change oil, how to. Do all sorts of things, you're gonna bring Wilmington pizza in. And you're gonna do a culinary section, you're gonna bring uh, a, a local accountant in and you're going to talk about taxes and. Bill paying and things like that, it's like a piece of, if you just take the pie and there's a slice all the way around of those things, that's kinda. How I see that steam room be working, I unfortunately think it'd be very hard to find a teacher for that. If you're looking for the industrial arts, okay? The third theme. Uh, and we saw, I saw several comments around this part, is the separation of students. Whether it be wings or on the boss, concerns about transportation of elementary kids on the bus with eighth graders and language. Uh, and then wings in school being, having some separation, kinda like we do right now hall. Uh, with the, you know, five, six and one wing and seven, eight. But they do move throughout the building together. And the last thing that I thought was really well thought out and I don't think it was in our inspect was a cross-country course. And we didn't have cross-country wings that specs were ready, so um, just to have some sort of outdoor trail that could folk, you know, work. Work as a, as cross-country course, I thought was a good thing. So I don't know if you have other comments of that, but I figured those might add mine.
So perhaps we could share this with committee members, maybe there's one.
This is gonna go, so I um, said the website is uh, meeting with Matt Flaver tomorrow to do the um. SBC twenty twenty-five. This document is gonna be on there, um. Rusty's numbers are gonna be on there and Arthur, I'm gonna ask you a quick question, this document here, is this what you were referring to, this has the capital Renault? By school, is that what you held up last time? This is the center one and this is the hall one?
No, I had this. I had all of our.
Oh, the big monster, gotcha. Okay, thank you. Yes.
And what's the last one? That are, had the biggest repair list, oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure. I'm starting to put those things in the, we'll put them in the new twenty twenty-five and I'm gonna sit down with Matt, cause I want it to be a sort of totally separated. The other stuff that's still gonna be accessible, I just wanna make sure it's like, one will say SBC twenty twenty, or if it was, and one's gonna say SBC twenty twenty-five. Then the, this will be in there.
A couple other comments I noticed happening repetitively were um, keeping an eye out for future expansion possibilities. Um, a safe location and um. Again, keeping concerns about the, all of the students at various ages together. Trying to keep the class lower of course, and there were a couple of questions about the rotating. Classes five through eight and then seven or eight, and I think that we understand that, but just. Because people may be watching this meeting, knowing that we're talking about this, could you just give the overview quickly of what that means? So that folks can catch up.
Yes, so basically what happened is you, they think, let's take this off here. When you think about an elementary school and you have a classroom teacher who teaches all subjects, there's no rotation. You can do that up through sixth grade typically, because that's where certifications run through, pre-K through sixth grade. Seven, then up, start specific content area certifications. So that's where you kinda have to start rotating unless you have John certified in math and ELI. And he can teach both, but if he's not certified in both, he can only teach what he's certified to teach, that's where you have to rotate, so. The que, the checkbox was, would you wanna rotate fifth, sixth, seventh and eighth? Doesn't mean they're joining classes, they stay within their grade range. Or would you wanna go through the elementary model pre-K through six? Five and six would have their homeroom teacher and that person would teach it all. And then they'd start rotating classes at seven to eight, that's what that question is about. You're welcome.
I mean, I. Pass me out of your real house, but what are the size classes at EO, like? I don't even have a concept of. Except my daughter's chemistry class, it's a lot of. I'm sorry.
Depends on the class, yeah, I can, uh, I don't like you. My new budget, but it's in my, isn't my budget, actually everything's broken out, like, it ranges, it's all.
It'll be really hard to guess too, because they're multi-age. Of them, you know.
Right. Um. I'm just wondering about like a seventh and eighth being a primer for high school and um. Thinking about class size from that perspective, um. I, I, at least eighth grade, I see as a. Uh, just a readying place for high school and. What can we do in our specs to get kids as ready as possible for that situation?
I think that's rotating classes.
Right, somebody said, someone said like lecture hall size classes. And I don't know that they have so embarrassed, I don't know that they do that at EO, but.
They do, they have a lecture hall.
But the freshmen are going there for Panther Experience presently, it's only part of their semester.
The majority of my kids' academic experiences have been small classes.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, Adeline Griffin, Griffin's a senior now and they've, they've ranged from the small side of ten or eleven to, you know, up to that eighteen and twenty, but. The majority of classes are within our range.
I mean, I guess back to the rotating classes, I feel like as, as much exposure as kids can have to that, I feel like is. Preparatory is better.
One of the pros of the rotation too, it, it may cost more, but one of the pros is you're ELA. You eat, sleep and breathe the LA, you know the program really well, you're reteaching lessons, so you get veterans, you reteach lessons. Um, as opposed to. You have to, as a, as a teacher who teaches it all, you have to be right on and ready to go because you're teaching math. And you're teaching ELA, the pro of that is also that they have an easier time integrating. Because they know what they're teaching all day long.
Just from a. A personal parent perspective, I feel like it's. Again, a plug for the rotation because it gives kids exposure to different adults. And navigating different personalities and different expectations and. Um, and just another challenge that they receive, that they can get support in kind of tackling.
I guess, is that more responsible to maneuver the changing from class to class, I think it develops responsibility.
And they change, no, I was just gonna say, not just the classroom space and the teacher, but often they're moving with other groups of children too, so. That's, that's what they're going to experience going over, um. Those three different things, which are really important, you have to be able to manage that in order to be uh, your most successful once you're on, so. The question really, I think, was about what age level do we wanna focus on that, do we wanna wait, that was what the question was, right? Keep the rotating classes with middle school model just seven and eight, that way we could consider looking at some different staffing for grades five and six. Um, or do the whole rotating classes from grades five through eight as we do now, and that response was in the top ten of. Positive responses that we received on the survey is doing it five to eight as we do now. And I think that's pretty typical for most middle schools in the area where they split at about that grade level. So that makes sense to me, but.
Putting here to say six through eighth, I don't know. Like even when kids go up to hall, the fifth grade is still pretty self-contained. Like they do a lot of the stuff in. The class, I think they stay, do they stay with the same children still? I think with my youngest, she's moved classrooms in fifth grade, but she stayed with the same students. The whole time, so that was like one last factor for them to sort of.
If you have ten sections, you could mix that up, but that's not the way this.
If you're sharing social studies and science, does that make a difference?
It does, and so that's why I said. If there's not a big difference here and not a big concern, you rotate seven and eight and you keep five, six elementary model because they're saving financial. You don't need a science and social studies teacher for fifth and sixth grade, it is the same person. You have two homerooms. They keep their kids and then seven, eight is where, and you do that because that's what the certification is. When you don't really have a choice when it's seventy, because you have to have something that's certified in math and certified in science. Uh, and it doesn't mean you couldn't be creative and. Using the seventh grade math, uh, seventh grade science teacher. Down, you can go one grade level. But when you think about my half a million dollar savings that I talked about in the past, that's. One of the ways you can get a little bit.
And keeping them in a continuing classroom for the whole day, still when they're twelve.
Correct.
Yeah, I get.
If we agree that. It's a better model.
Cause you can decide whether or not you wanna change that in your ad spec, that's, that's the point of that. You don't really have the data to support it, maybe the other.
Right.
It's, it's kinda what shows.
Classroom wise. It would be if you had two self-contained or three, but you would have three if it was rotating.
Yes.
Three classrooms.
Because that's a middle school model. And they're not, let's just, I wanna make sure I'm clear about that. They're not self-contained all day long. Like they are, I mean, yes, they have the same academic teacher all day long. But like they're going off to intervention block, they're going off to enrichment block, they're going off to unified hours, they're going off to lunch and resets or band. Right, they're doing some other things. It's just that they're getting all our core content from the same person.
I would be curious to know how the teachers feel, the physics teachers.
Well, how do you think they're gonna feel?
I don't know.
Three sections versus two. And then they have to plan everything where they don't have to plan anything today, that's, it's, it's a tough conversation.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I'd be surprised if they went, yeah, let's do that.
Well, I'm thinking what's best for the children, if, from their perspective, which model would be best for the kids? Not so much their planning.
I think they're gonna be here and no offense to them, but.
Yeah.
That's just what I think someone would say. I do think there's pros to the same person teaching E L A all day long. I just shared that, right? There's a pro to that, that's the three, that's the middle school model. So. Again, the point of the, the ad spec is in the, in the survey is did you get enough feedback to go? Should we change something in the ads back? I had the, the numbers too right in front of me. Tech ed, tech is the, the construction, manufacturing, engineering, transportation, communications, all of those things. There was one thousand two hundred and twenty-four people certified and stated that, it's a five grades, five to twelve certification. Um, and that was the shortage area one and the trades and industrial, which is they call it comprehensive high school. But I think you can actually apply it down to middle school, um, and it's the same kind of thing, trade, industrial education that had two hundred and fifty-eight. So, so it's, I mean, you, you struggle finding somebody. With that, so.
But you, you could do the hybrid that you're talking about with the, the certified classroom teacher and then bringing in specialists or whatever you know.
Yeah, you, you'd create a commu- uh, a community kinda. You know, agreements basically, yes, partnerships is a great way to say it. And there's enough. Folks in our community that you could, and, and we, and we're not talking about huge commitments, you know, I'm not saying this person's gonna. Commit five weeks to come in and do those things, you know, if kids could learn how to change a tire. Learn how to change oil on the car, how do you put air in a car? Uh, I mean, you know, things like that, if they can do some banking things, like there's. Those things I think would be beneficial, but it's driven by a certified educator.
Yeah, I think the discussion. We had was exposure to these. Situations and, and. Having a, having an opportunity to. Do the things to decide like tech, women tech versus E O.
Yeah, yeah. And they also might be part of this plan. Right, the ag program here could be part of this plan. It of what that slices of the pie, did, did that make sense? I think in an ed spec conversation in the, in the questionnaire is, do you feel? You need to designate space for something like this? And I would say there's enough comments and support. That you'd say yes, and what does that space look like? Do you agree as board that the steam space that you have designated? Would be that joint space for all of those things? And it's, you're not framing it yet, like we were talking about price last time, like it'd be more expensive equipment, you're not doing that right now? You're just saying there's going to be a space for something like that.
I think it's pretty small.
Yeah, I.
If I remember correctly, it's not a very, yeah.
It's a classroom size of nine hundred, so it's, you'd probably be doing things like, you know. But you could put, think about, there's a classroom at hall that has a mini kitchen. Like you, you could put a mini kitchen in small classroom and just, it, just a science lab, you could do a lot of things, it's just. What do you need to do and then? Making sure if you're going to change oil, that you have a location in your outside area. That you could do that. Right, if you were going to do culinary stuff, that you could do that.
So all of the specs are based on our programming, so what we really need to decide is if we wanna make space in our programming to add. Those kinds of things under the umbrella of what we have for steam right now, and then, um. When it says that space in our particular list, you just know that those are the things we have in mind for the future, in the future. In flexible ways that we want to use that space, so like, just now saying that, um, having an outdoor accessibility. So you can do other things like go to a vehicle or find Mr. Polino in the tractor, you know?
Yeah.
Um, that's something to consider when design happens and that won't come from us, that will come from the S B C and their architecture. Um, from that they work with, but we can still, um, just make sure to keep that in mind and we would. Probably have to add it in some kind of way, maybe just add some notation. In the ed spec itself so that it says more clearly that that's where we're putting that. So the public knows and so we remember that that's flexible spaces for those purposes.
Rusty has hit in his at a thousand, and I think there's a reason why, we put it in as nine hundred. And he's got it in his draft as a thousand square feet, and we could easily add some, if you're okay with me, like. My, all the things I named off, uh, we could just put those types of things underneath, what is being mean? And what types of things would happen in this classroom? We could just put that, cause I think there's a paragraph with an explanation about that, that'd be easy to make sure all of those things from the survey. Right, some of the community feedback are there, the culinary, the automotive, the wood, some sort of woodworking, some sort of, you know. I mean, there's a bunch of things we could do.
Do you think that all falls under the steam heading, or would we wanna call it steam and like vocational, um, exploration or something? Some other words.
I think you could put it all under steam.
Yeah.
But there might be some stretch, right, like the automotive piece to me, could you call it science?
Yeah.
And you're right, you know, is it that, like you could, it depends on the connection you make. The thing to me is, is the, is the thousand square feet, and I think you just said that. Is that match what you're looking for, would you think you need a bigger space, you need a secondary space? To me, it's some of that stuff that's location-based, right? You do your outdoor stuff in the fall or late spring, and that's what, you know. You just wanna have access from your classroom.
I think we're gonna need larger space, whether it be part of the classroom or closet space or something to store the equipment. You know, and maybe rotate the equipment or.
Part of that though, so they don't have their own character. I'd be interested to see like. What could be realistically put in a thousand square feet?
Hmm.
If you think about those things that I listed, right, if I go back to. What?
Are you thinking of like? How a classroom might run a theme, so it would be set up for something for a period of time, that stuff would get stored away and then.
Like our dramatic play, yeah, except that it would be, but the kitchen stuff is gonna need it, it's gonna have to live there, but.
Yeah.
You could bring other things in and out of the closet because you needed it.
I just don't know, it depends on what it is, so like the greenhouse piece. You could have an outdoor greenhouse, or a greenhouse window, right, exactly. The industrial arts piece that, and Sam, jump in, Sam.
Hey, I just wanted to mention too, for what it's worth, like I'm, I know that, um. When, sometimes when we think about a culinary space, we're thinking of like a full-blown kitchen and. Stoves and refrigerators and stuff like that, I mean, I've been in a bunch of different schools. Uh, middle school level and high school levels, various cracks and. Different, uh, technical school, well, not so much technical schools, because they have like the actual culinary kitchen that they use. But I mean, we could, and it might be getting into semantics now, but. There's induction burners that you could use instead of a full-blown stove, there's kid, you know, just the tabletop mixers, I've seen a lot of that. Um, as a way of introducing some basic culinary skills into classrooms instead of having like. Full-blown stove setups like you think of the four, four burner gas stoves. Um, a lot can be done on those countertop induction style burners now. Just throwing it out there, but I know you're talking about square footage and how do we fit all this? So there's different ways to be creative, I think, with things like that, I just wanted to mention things I've seen.
Right, and to go along with that, if we would have, for example, a sink in this space. You want it to be able to put big pans in to rinse out for a variety of different uses, right, so. Um, just when it comes to that kinda stuff, you're right, Sam, we'd have to think about space, storage, how would we make this over?
It's also about duplication, like where can you, you know, get two for one?
Right.
You're gonna have a full culinary kitchen. Because they're serving lunch. So if it's. At the right time, where you can use the kitchen space and there's agreements on what that looks like. And food safe certification and kids can get, I don't know if kids can get food safe certification or not, but. Like those types of things you could, that would allow you to do that. Um, you know, so you don't necessarily need a full-blown culinary kitchen, I think the Sam's point, you could use another space, so. Yeah, it's our team, I'm.
Yeah, I was. I would, I wasn't even thinking about the culinary kitchens, like they have at E O or something like that, I was literally thinking of a stove.
Right.
I was saying, so that's clarification.
And I'll give you another example, that's the same type of thing, laundry, like a washer and a dryer, we have washers in the schools. And so the custodians use them for their microfiber stuff. Um, and so. That could be part of a home ec class, it's just in a closet somewhere that's. Could be used, that you're duplicating, you know, how you're using something, so there's ways to do it that don't require another. And that's the home ec side, I think, I guess, but.
So how, so I just wanna make sure I'm clear on the first feature for today, so are we? Do we need to vote to modify the specs or?
No, if you're okay, you just, if you're gonna give me the nod to say to all of them, I'm sorry, I was reading off the things that, like. All the things that I pulled out of the survey, we talk about industrial arts, culinary, um, personal finance, sewing, greenhouse, robotics, digital media. Um, and I'm including all of the industrial arts, the automotive, the, you know, and all of those things that were listed. I would make sure those things are listed underneath steam. In this classroom, this as well, because that's something the community is asking for. It, it's not necessarily going to be a class on woodworking, but. There are plenty of folks in this town that are master. Woodworkers, right, that can come in and support us for a period of time. And it's just forming agreements, but you still have to have a certified teacher there.
Back to you, Sam.
Pressed the wrong button, um, I don't know if this is beating a dead horse, but I'm just thinking about it and adding to the conversation, so maybe it's in the minutes or maybe it's in. People's minds if and when the time comes to actually apply these things to real life. Um, like Phil was saying too, I mean, there's, there's a lot of different ways. To incorporate, incorporate STEM learning in things that are already available, like he said, like the washer and dryer are there for rags. Or mop heads or whatever, I remember when I went to Wyndham Tech, like the HVAC class walked around and. Checked out the water fountains, and I know they're like bubblers now or water bottle fillers now, but, um. I think it's, it's easy to get caught up in like, okay, we need this much. Of course, like more square footage would be awesome, but I also think that it's good to keep in mind, just like. Being creative and thinking about ways to use multipurpose space and to go around, it's like, okay, well, we have this facility. With all these different things that take electrician, electricity, it takes, you know, HVAC, it takes plumbing, it takes carpentry, like all these things just built into the. Infrastructure anyways, um, I don't think that it. Just something, I just wanted to say it, cause I was thinking about it, but I think that would be good, and I'm all for like creating a collaborative effort between. Community and staff and people who can brainstorm, and it's like, okay, if we are only working with this amount of square footage or whatever, to try to stay within. A certain allotted. Square footage that's given to us so that we don't have to worry, but I mean, I think space waiver, um. Obviously, it depends on if we're talking about a new school or just fixing our school, whatever the people decide to vote on that they want to do. Um, I think it's good to be creative and think about, well, how can we incorporate, cause the ed spec is for. The, I don't want the ed spec to have a negative connotation that we're trying to push a new school. Because I think like Phil had mentioned last time too, the ed spec is just for. If people don't want a new school and they decide that they want to just. Keep working towards fixing the schools that we have, how are we gonna incorporate the needs of the town, and this is getting a gauge for what. The people in town would like to see, right? So I think it's good to have these conversations on, okay, well, we don't have the space to do that, but how can we incorporate these things into? Infrastructure we have now or maybe infrastructure later, but either way, we're not gonna have. A thousand square feet per trade and per home ec class, and you know what I mean, so. That's all, I just wanted to kind of. Piggyback on what Phil was saying and add that as well.
Thank you.
Alright, so. So I had a conversation with Tammy, a very unpleasant conversation with Tammy. Um, and there's an important distinction that we have to remember, uh, and I don't think was really made clear. Uh, it's, it was news to me when she told me about it. The reimbursement rate of seventy-nine point six four is on a new school. That we do the renovate to new, and I'm just saying, we don't make that decision, I'm just saying. If that's what gets chosen, that gets that reimbursement rate no matter what. However. If a new school option is on there, whether it be on the hall site or on its own site, whatever it is. The cost of that building has to be less than the cost to renovate. Otherwise, we would lose ten percent of the reimbursement. The reason I bring that up is because. Through these ed specs, the proposed ed specs. Are at seventy-two thousand three sixty-two, which is twelve grand over our allotment, twelve thousand square feet over our allotment. The funded estimate, Rusty's presentation. Had the new school, new site at sixty thousand eight twenty-five, which is actually seven hundred square feet more than. Uh, what the ed specs are. The difference between the new school, new site estimation and the renovate estimation is three point four million dollars. It's razor thin. And that's gonna go down because this estimate is based on sixty, not the seventy-two. So. I, I, and like I said, it was a very painful conversation because I was very much for this. Getting this data and trying to build what the town wants and everything, and now it's an even tighter balancing act between. What we build for the future and what might be approved. Because if we, if we do a lot of stuff and we blow the school up. To a, a much higher number. I mean, it's sixty-five million, ten percent of sixty-five million, just on the base here, that's six and a half million dollars. And that would just go away. And it would end up being, it'd probably end up being more, the school, the school got to a much higher, uh, square footage. So we have such a razor-thin balancing act now, it's, it's. We, we have to be creative with the stuff that we wanna do, because I wanna put some of this stuff in there. But at the same time, I'm looking at the proposed specs, which were, which are less than what we're originally done. And there's so low.
Yeah.
Like the proposed specs are, are, they're eleven thousand square feet lower. And when this, when this new, uh, enrollment study comes back. I guarantee you it's gonna be lower, right, it'll lose even more square footage, and this is, it's, I wanna see something pass. And that's why I bring this up, I don't want this to fail. I, I want us to move forward with something, but you know as well as I do, the town's only gonna move forward with something if they feel they can afford it. I, I want us to move forward with something, but you know as well as I do, the town's only gonna move forward with something if they feel they can afford it. And I, it, like I said, very unpleasant conversation and I'm thoroughly disappointed. But that just adds a layer of complexity to what we pass on to the SBC, because again, we're not making this decision, but we're giving them. The numbers that say we'd like you to build a school this size. And if we give a doc document says we'd like you to build a school this eighty two thousand square feet. That's probably gonna throw the useful option out the window, because we're gonna lose that extra reimbursement, that's, that's the tough part. And I'm not saying a rental to new isn't gonna be just as good. But some people don't even want that. And you're gonna lose votes on, on that fact alone, so it's, it's so, oh.
Did you get the sense from her though, that you lose the ten percent, but you could still do a space waiver with state?
She said she's meeting with DAS at some point about the whole space waiver situation, about that place and everything, so as of right now. It's not the best news, that may change, the AS may say, yeah, you can get a space waiver and then it'll bring your costs down and then you will be back in a better position, but. For right now. Right, and she was talking about. You know, she looked at the industrial arts things and she's like, the state's never going to reimburse you specifically for industrial in classrooms. Because no one, no other school basically does that, that's why we say we're created with the steam classroom, that's why I think it would work. But we can't have like a specific workshop class in the states, and it'd be like, no, you can't fund that on your own, so.
So I think you're saying that it's seventy two thousand to renovate is new. Well, according to the document you were looking at, and the new school would be about sixty, sixty.
I'm saying.
So. Does the, the, the new has to be less than the cost to renovate?
The, if, to get the bonus ten percent. The cost of the new school has to be less than a renovate option.
So right now with our numbers, we're there. Was it twelve thousand, twelve thirty about a buffer?
No, no, that's square footage, right now with the numbers that we got. From Rusty, which, these are a couple months old. But that's what I'm going on, it's a three point four million dollar.
Okay.
That's just something I consider when we're looking at the ed specs is that I. I wanna see something pass. I don't. I don't wanna, I don't want us to. Present the proposed building. That's almost due to fail.
And the spaces that they're gonna look at. Are your quote unquote the like. Uh, a flex space bill of support, because they understand that if you have an extra section, you're stuck. But they're not gonna give you a flex, and Rusty said this to me afterwards, he goes, Phil, they're not gonna give you a flex space for every grade level, they're not gonna give it to you. You're gonna, you're gonna kill your square footage. Your breakout spaces that he shrunk. There's a reason why he's shrinking those, but. You, you can't get away from the science lab, like you have to uh, teach science in the science lab through middle school, that's what you need. You need your elementary classroom, so those are the things that, you know, they're. Going to be there, someone wrote in the survey, swimming pool, that'd be nice, the state is never gonna give you that, right? And so. You get feedback, but it doesn't mean you have to include all those things, and that's why I say, like, if you can define some of those specialty things people are interested in. And you can put them into a steam type of space, this is where we fly, someone said, well, I'd love multiple world languages. And our argument is, well, we can't get a certified teacher, but we can offer multiple world languages through Rosetta Stone. We're being creative in how we're solving problems and it's done in one space.
The other thing too is, there's some comments about a separate auditorium. And that was taken out of the proposed ed specs and it saved us seven thousand square feet, so we had that back in, now we're pushing twenty thousand square feet over. What's currently allotted, which is definitely, almost definitely gonna go down. With the new, um.
That particular space can fall into the category of possible future plans.
Sure.
Um, which helps a little bit, if you think about that line.
But you need to set aside land.
There's, yeah, land and then a way to connect it, right? Um, I was looking, I made notes of the top ten comments that um, got the most responses on that survey and. They include preschool spaces for three and four year olds, so that's something. I think we already had reflected in our two, four. Um, so that was one that had to do with the space, outdoor education space was a top ten, but that we can do on our own. Um, rotating grades five through eight, got more than a hundred responses, we've already addressed that in that ed spec. Um, grass athletic fields and having them on site. Hasn't to do with the land, but not the building itself. Group instructional spaces outside of the classroom, we have that already on there, world language class, Phil just touched on that. Contemporary site security features and contemporary building security features, those were in the top ten. And they already, I know Rusty's got it, that was his number one thing, is looking at U C and security. And then the natural light throughout the building was in there as well, and I, he brought that to our attention as well, so. Nothing, um, all of these things in the top ten from our survey that we got, um, responses back, we kinda already. Have in there, I think, so that's good, and then it's just a matter of. Like creative thinking and how can we give a program that people are asking for in the space that we need, so. Hopefully that you're gonna be super outside the box thinkers and figure out how we can make that one, so everybody, listen, can I do? Alright.
Sorry.
Go ahead, I just was wondering if there was more um, comments from the group about. The overall responses.
I'm still concerned about enough classrooms, um. That would be my only concern, yeah, it makes me nervous too, but.
We can't do anything but go on what we have.
Unfortunately, that be a labor, could that?
There's two, there's two extra in that.
Two for, for what levels?
One four, one four. And one four five eight. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Now, do you need an extra one for finding, if we were, if we were doing a rotating model? We would have um. Designated for each class. Could we move that one down to the elementary? Um, just because right now we have one, two. Well, theoretically, three classes that could be classes of three.
Is that one up in the higher grades, did that have to do with sciences, social studies?
Yeah, look at this, science has their own. And then you've got the two classrooms for this, so you've got. Uh, ten classrooms for four.
I can't remember if we changed for a period of time, sciences and social studies was split during the school year for some of the grades, so I'm trying to remember if that happened before. We, this was made or after.
And I don't think he has, and, and, and I'm looking at, um. I'm looking at this document. Which is his ed spec comparison. I do not believe. Someone else sees it. I don't see a social studies class. At those levels, I see science, but.
I only see two.
Right, that's ELA and, and math, but if you look at our ed spec, that was officially earlier approved. This right here, this eight thousand square feet, that's five eight, that's four grade levels times two each. With a social studies for five, six and a social studies for, for seven, eight. That does not exist in this model.
Right, yeah. And would that science room be used the entire time?
Um, it's by, it, it, it depends on the schedule.
Because it could double as. Science, social studies, but then it would have to be.
Or it could be double science, social studies, but it also could be double as. Science, because typically like right now, you have a science teacher for seven, you have a science teacher for eight. And the kids all rotate through, it could be a science teacher for five, six and a science teacher for seven, eight, it just depends on how you build your schedule.
Right, then you would need the other room for the social studies.
Or. You're using a flex space. That's where you. It's kinda like high school right now. Every space is used. Let's not be out. Right, if you were to move everybody in, you don't all get a neighborhood square foot classroom, it's not the way it works. It's nice, but it's not the way it works.
Now the breakouts, the five through eight breakups, there's two of those that are the size of a regular classroom.
Where are you looking?
Only a hundred twenty square feet.
Yeah, he's talking from one fifty to one twenty.
Oh, this is the new, oh, I'm, I'm looking at the old numbers, that's okay. Okay.
I think you were just asking like, do you have any other comments, what I could do. Is I could work with Rusty to take, um, I'm just gonna pop this back on screen, because it's just easier to do it. I could work with Rusty. This is the. Uh, first time ed spec program. And the proposed is, Q A now is proposed. I could work with Rusty to make this document. Which is the, the last ed spec. I'm just gonna make version two of it and I could match the square footage. All the way through and then if there's any gaps, like social studies, which I believe is there. He may say it's actually not there because of the flex rooms, which you didn't have built in. It might not be there, but I can confirm that all of him, the question was really, is there anything else you wanted to shrink? Um, or add, and I think from Arthur's point, what he said earlier, I agree, I think you are on a very slippery slope if you're considering adding. I think you. Have one more big decision to make, um, around how you do your auditorium, whether it's a gymatorium or a cafeteria. Um, and you could just write in your ed spec. Either or, you'd be satisfied with either or, and then it just depends on the design, because if it's a renovation of all. It may only have one option that you can do.
I really liked talent where you were using all three. So they had the gym in the front and the stage was on the side of the gym and that opened up into the. Cafeteria.
Rusty did not like it.
Which gave you all of that space.
It's really hard to program, it's really hard to functionally.
Okay.
And all the things that are next to each other, like where you're throwing balls and basketballs and like it. It was either gymatorium, cafeteria or auditorium. But the three together was, I think, a big risk, I understand why they did it. Um, and they had probably more flexibility because they were full length, but. Sam's got her hand up too.
Sam? You have a new comment. Are you still there, Samantha?
Yeah, sorry, um, we had a question. I don't know if this is like. Ghetto, but my question is. As far as like a science lab goes, how I was talking about how I've seen some culinary classes, could it be? A combined, like, does it have to be a science lab? Or could it just be a flex class that we bring out some bunsen burger, burners? And have like a fume hood in a corner type of thing with a shower, seen that before. I don't know if that's looked down upon, or if that's maybe a creative space saving solution. But.
Sam, most middle school science labs now, no gas, um, lines. They're really looking at uh, storage of chemicals, you have to have a space of that, you have some sort of fume hood. Um, and you have. Science tables, but from the standpoint, they, they all have the shower too, because that's probably a, an ocean thing or, or, or code thing. Uh, but from the standpoint of like, gotta have, you know, bones and burgers, that, that's not there anymore, maybe high school level, but not middle school level.
Right, yeah, I didn't know if like what equipment you exactly needed, if, if all you need is those tables, you could use the tables as a setup. For really any class, I'd imagine, and then you could just have, like I said, the fume hood in the corner.
Yeah.
And maybe like a combined sword, storage space for. Well, you'd need it the, it to be locked for the chemicals, but um, yeah, I don't know, I was just throwing it out there, how to try to use some combined space. That's all.
I know. Rusty said several times that having an actual science lab space. Is uh, widely common right now for middle school students, I think it has a lot to do with the. New standards that they're doing and all the hands on um. Activities that they need to be able to do for their assessments and going forward in high school, so. I think that probably, that did come up one time, we were like, can we just use a classroom and call it science, it's more like. Have the science lab and then if you need to use it as a classroom, was kinda my understanding based on what he said, but we could ask him about that again.
Yeah, and I think the layout, the way he's got this in the ed spec is the way that we have at high school right now, it's a science lab. With a small office space with chemical storage in the middle and then the science lab next to it, so they shared that storage space in the middle, it's a locked space, chemicals are locked, doors can be locked. So I guess I posed the question of, do you want me to go back and take and combine? Um, unless you saw something else that uh, was in the community feedback piece. Um. And what may happen is that when you turn over, when you pass an ed spec. Um, and I'm assuming you want me to take the seven thousand square feet out of this for auditorium, um, you're gonna, you would follow Rusty's. Need on that piece of how it would be a gymatorium or cafeteria. Um, is that if the SBC, whether it was a reno or a new. If they were unable to do something in the ed spec, it basically comes back to you, you have to give the nod or say. No, it's gotta be in there, because. C S D E is gonna require that. Uh, if they say, look, we can only get you this, are you okay with that? You put eight thousand square feet for this, can it be seven thousand five hundred and fifty? And you ponder that and say, yeah, but no. But you might have to give a little bit. Uh, some of these things that maybe it's gonna be too big, uh, but Rusty's recommendations are there for a reason. And. He's not giving you the, the gold standard of, you know. A, a twelve hundred square foot classroom, that's done. Out there.
I noticed there's two science labs.
That's what, what I'm saying is, it's modeled after what we have now, yes.
If we don't need that number wise, then could one of those become the social studies? I mean, in terms of the schedule.
It could be, sure, yes. Good, the bottom line is, is the space gonna be there? And the answer is, yes, because it's in your ed spec, right? Is the extra class gonna be there in the flex or one flex for one through four, one flex for five, yes, it's going to be there.
Oh, we, we're using other flex, we have three flexes.
Yeah, the flex at the bottom is the one that's in red.
I only see one thousand square feet for an auditorium.
Are you looking at his?
Yes.
Yeah, that's because he's, he's bumped that down, it's the, the seven thousand I'm talking about is what was in our book in the old ed spec.
Um, that was eight thousand. I mean.
Well, yeah, the other thousand like ancillary, so the actual auditorium.
Oh, sorry, I see, yeah, it was eight thousand, the point is, the auditorium that's in the old ed spec. Is coming now.
I'm sorry, I thought you mentioned the auditoriums from ours, that's got the seven thousand, but it's. I mean, whatever.
Uh, where do you see it, Jen, I'm, I'm looking at his old one, three.
It's number three, assembly, community use.
And his, um, that thousand square feet is the stage. And I think he mentioned that last time, because I said, what is that thousand square feet, and that's the. The station awaits.
Phil, I'm not seeing. Um, general music, we only have choral music, would all of the music classes fit in that choral?
That's what you have now, you also have the stage.
But all the stage could be used as a question?
Yep, just like Colin did. You've got that soundproof wall.
Okay. Okay.
So if you don't see anything you wanna add, what I will do is um, just like when I give you and present the contract to you. Um, and it's got cross outs, and you can see what's old and what's new. I'll present it the same way. So I'll make sure the steam definition is is updated. I'll go through if there's anything else that's in the the quote-unquote folder document that needs updating. I will make it clear for you so you can see that, and I'll work with Rusty to redo the grids. So the grids match to what he has for size. Um, and then I'll probably just do those from scratch, just it's probably easier. Um, I just have the work I have to do that, and then I can give it back to you with the your next meeting.
How is that working as far as the timeline goes? I feel there's a a high sense of urgency and I'm concerned that.
It's this is done in October. I think it means the fourteenth. I don't see the S B C being rolled by the fourteen.
Were you at that meeting?
Yes.
If you have any dates that were discussed yet, or?
They're talking about um, potentially establishing the charge at their next meeting. Uh, the first about first meeting in October, whatever that date is.
Okay.
It will take time. It'll be mid-November or the they gotta, they'll get the charge, then they gotta go through the interview process, finding numbers. They gotta get up to speed. It'll be early to say anything's happening. It's probably in November at best, but for more election. And that's why I mentioned that. Having Edspecs done, having enrollment study in the works, right? Those things are important, because those things change your dollar amounts. So when those dollar amounts change based upon the Edspec and what you're actually going to report for based upon your enrollment study. They're gonna be ready to roll. They'll have the numbers and they go.
Do do we think we'll have more information about the space waiver at some point before that happens, or?
Because she should be meeting at the in the next couple of weeks. Open for her. So that will give us more clarification.
Yeah.
Last time I met with them. What was presented here was wasn't, the only item was the auditorium, and they kind of went eh. Everything else, they know, to make it a pre-K eight. What are you cutting out? That they didn't, they were, they, and at the time, it was Scott Pelman from Colliers, and said, you gotta not have a cafeteria, like, you're not gonna have a gym. You have to have your classrooms. You need a nurse's office.
Yeah.
They understood that. Um, if you had, again, um, a secondary gym, and you had a swimming pool, and you had, you know, written in your Edspecs that you wanted gold banisters. They would have laughed you out. That's not what you have.
No, it's based on current programs, not even what we wish we had or thinking forward, yeah.
Correct.
And we've been talking lately about class size. If we have two classrooms per grade at the elementary level, that pretty much pigeonholes us as far as what we're doing for class size and staffing. And I think that's probably, that's why I get worried when we have few flex spaces, and I'm pretty sure that's what Anne's thinking too, so. Parents should be aware of that. The community should know that. If there's only a couple of flex spaces and we have a boom, or you wanna continue to see lower class sizes, then that is a conversation that should be had. That's a topic that should be addressed.
And I think tell me if I'm wrong. When we had one bump out space, we could do at Hall in the last design. Is that, am I making that up?
No, I think that's what she was talking about.
Was there a space at Hall School in the last design that was drawn for us? There was only one space that we could add an additional space. It was like where a side playground was, and that was it. There's no other direction to go.
Okay.
If I remember that correctly.
Yeah.
That's the, that was the a drawback of the renovation at Hall was your Route thirty-two, the river, you've got your parking, and you're getting walking into your fields. If your fields are important to you. Right, if your, if fields are important to you, you could bump out from that way. But this stuff feels important to you, so.
Did we ever talk about? Did the group ever talk about in the past? Um, having land space for early childhood wing or building, thus giving four more class four more classrooms to the primary grade level.
Only in the new facility was there a spot where there was a consideration for wing extension. It, I don't think it was necessarily early childhood, but it was wing extension. That would be on ground level, so it could be any grade level.
And I think that's huge, because it's only a matter of time until you know, we're mandated to have universal pre-K, and I think the state will probably at that point give money to add additions and stuff. I would guess if we do, when we do get to that place. So I think we really need to just be sure that we have that space, even if it's a playground for now, you know, um, looking into the future.
We are a tough stock. Like it when we do that. They don't like it when we do that.
Look ahead?
Yeah.
Well, if we're wanting to be here for fifty, and we live in our schools for a hundred years, so we really do have to look ahead.
For sure. That would be quite a bummer to make what, well, it's we're we're stuck, right? Because we have this certain population. We have this predicted enrollment. We're bound by those kinds of things, but also we need to look forward and make sure that if we need to, we can make more space for more students, because if they come and we don't have anywhere to put them, now we have a million children in the classrooms and what have you. So we are kind of stuck. I think the only, for me, the only way to manage that is to build what we are able to do right now for what we have right now and the very near projected future, but then try to keep that land availability. You know, in the back of our minds for things like that, but this is kind of the best that I could. With, I don't know what y'all think.
I know that would be a shame. We have this beautiful school, and then we're supposed to add four more classrooms.
Or we have to put a early childhood building elsewhere in the town. Now you've got parents driving all over the place to try and make things work, like let's try to. Do we have a lot going on? Some of the thoughts in the air. That's why we need a lot of help.
Arthur, you were, I'm just processing what you said earlier. You mentioned Tammy said that ten thousand square feet or the rate, the difference, the ten percent, not ten thousand square feet, ten percent. Did she mention the tie to the July one date for the square footage?
Yeah, that that ten percent is the existing legislation for a new building.
Right.
That's what that is.
So I wonder, you were worried about the razor thin difference between the two prices, and I bet it rose. Because I think if it's after July one. It's the renovation that that really goes up. Because it's the cost per square foot. You're talking about ninety thousand square feet versus the new building. Do you understand what I'm saying? I wonder if the bumper goes up i- if it gets larger. But what I'm talking, do you remember what I'm talking about? They were talking about setting the s- the rate for the square foot, how much cost per square foot could be and and putting a cap on it. They have that now, but they never followed it, and it it all seems that they're actually going to follow it in the future. That kicks in July one of twenty-six, which is why we said we really would like to see an application before, because that could cost you literally millions of dollars. I think because the reno add at Hall and the size of the square footage. That is gonna make the gap grow.
Right, but it make the gap grow is way, because if you get, these aren't, if these are above what that cap is, I don't know, I don't know, I don't remember what cap is, so they you know, may or may not be, but if the projection or the proposed are above what they can, that's gonna grow that for new school as well.
I guess it's a cool project.
So it just kind of depends on how much bigger the rent I would be over over the
Over new.
Over new.
Yeah.
The other thing too is I know we were just talking about ramps, but if you was considered the new school on the Hall site, that's six million dollars cheaper. And that really, that really separates you a little bit, and it's and it's not great, because there's not a lot of land there, but.
You lose your field space.
Lose your field space. No, no, no. Nothing, it doesn't. I can't tell, because it depends on the size of the of the Edspecs, but it just, there's no land acquisition cost in that in that option, so that saves six million dollars, according to them, so.
But there is no fields.
Yeah, but there's no fields and there's no managers, no expansion, like that's.
But Arthur, when you think about like dealing with septic systems and everything that's going on under the school. There has to be a cost to that, you know, it may not be buying new land, which.
Well, you don't have something, well, I mean, you have something, you have city water on the Hall site.
Yeah, but I'm guessing there's all kinds of funky things under the school there, if you take it down and.
Yeah, but you gotta have something on there too.
No, there's a lot.
There, yeah, there's this. It's a phone call, I wish I think that.
It's good to know now, you know, you can really consider it.
Yeah.
And important to share with our community, like
That was the thing that I
There's a whole lot going on, so.
I was shocked by it, so.
Obviously, you keep it as clear and um everybody's all on the same page, and that's that's really the goal, so.
And the other thing, I I do have to say with that too, is it doesn't necessarily mean that the new our new school design would be off the table. It would just cost ten percent more. It could still be an option. It's just gonna be a more trash option than it would be otherwise.
Did the demolition costs worked in there?
I'm I'm guessing Rusty did, Rusty did everything with the, I'm going by his numbers.
No, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, and the bottom line is, it's hard to have that conversation until you have your Edspec done, and you have your your enrollment study. Because then you then you know your real numbers, and you go, okay, this is where we're at.
Right.
And the number based upon that point in time, because it's gonna get more expensive as you go. The only other item, um, and I can take the Edspec and and make those changes, the only other item that I mentioned tonight, I don't know if it's really under agenda or not, it's it's tied to the Edspec or not, was the charge. It's probably not tied to Edspecs, but um did you say when you were, would like to finalize your charge or you're starting it?
Starting it, we're, we have we're, yes, the, at our next meeting, we will be framing the charge.
So that was one thing that I shared with you. I sent you the last charge. That if you want me to send any feedback to the board selection. I'll leave that feedback put on on, that that it doesn't have to be like perfectly written, it just be, please make sure you consider this in charge.
I think the most important thing is the dates. That the, that we have that um is that June or July of twenty-six, and then we lose all of our, what we lose, what we lose the set price for the space. Am I correct with that? Rather than the price increase.
I don't know that that goes on the charge. I think that's just a informational, like here's, here's a recommendation for the charge based upon the things the board bet hurt last time. And if you don't act, if the school building committee is unable to act by this point, realize the cost will more than likely go up after July one twenty-six because of the the rates.
That's that general timeline I brought up that time.
Right.
Have to submit the application by that date, right?
Correct. And so I say, like, the more we can, once that S P C is born. Go, like, it's not a lot of back into all, a lot of the data from last time still exists and is still pertinent. Um, it still applies. The only piece is that is the monster question is length. Um, is that committee would have to quickly go. Do we think differently about any piece of land that would apply in this situation?
Okay, so we need to, everybody needs to redo, is welcome to review of the former charge, and if you have any additions or alterations you would like to recommend, you could give out. Again, we don't make the charge, but we can recommend some things for the future S B C. Um, as well as uh, recommending timeline of some sort, or just some markers, so they know what they're putting in. Those are those, they have the decisions there. We can help with some background work and some guidelines that way. Um, just to try to keep everything on track and to work collaboratively, which we're gonna do one day. All right, thank you for all of that information. Sounds like we're in the thick of it. All right. Um, we are ready to conclude here with presence of speech, so if you're interested, you can raise your hand in real life or virtually, please keep your comments to five minutes. Make sure to say your name and your address at the beginning for our reference, please.
The timer should work too.
Oh, good. Anybody? Yes, sir?
Let me tell them, Merle Road, Wellington. Um, so before I get into my comments, I just, I I found something interesting. Uh, approximately twenty fourteen, Wellington had uh, one thousand forty-seven kids, eighteen and under, twenty nineteen had eight hundred and forty. And twenty twenty-four had about six hundred eighty-four, according to the census. And then as far as my comments, so uh, I wanted, you know, I wanted to know a few things. Sam's comments on the Edspecs weren't necessarily about a new school, but were general observation, and I thought that was a good viewpoint from Sam. Outside of Arthur's comments, I really in, it showed up about a half hour late online. Uh, outside Arthur's uh, comments, uh, which I do appreciate, there really wasn't much mentioned about keeping affordability in mind for the people. Uh, at least it wasn't honed in on uh, in town as we move forward. I also want to thank those who filled out a a poll on the same Facebook page where Phil shared uh, the school survey. I recognize that not everyone in town had a voice in that poll, just like the survey itself. It doesn't represent the whole community. For example, I didn't fill it out because I thought, I thought it was flawed, it was flawed survey. And I'm sure people had their own reasons why they didn't fill it out. That said, I appreciate, uh, even Phil had uh, contributed to the poll at one point, uh, I saw, which I appreciate. And the results, there were a hundred and one votes, which is a substantial amount of people. Uh, fifty of those people wanted zero increase in their taxes for new school projects overall, which is sad. Uh, six were up to a hundred, thirteen were up to two hundred, and four were up to five hundred. Seven were up to a thousand, and twenty were above one thousand. I'm sorry, twenty-one were above thousand. That shows sixty-nine percent of the those that uh, filled it out were two hundred dollars or below. Seventy-three percent of those are five hundred or below, and only seven were willing to go up to a thousand. I think what you, as the board, and I know the S B C will be in charge, but I think the board education should be keeping this in mind going forward. We need to know the appetite of what the people in the town can afford, so, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, man?
Uh, Rachel Cox, Common Road. I just wanted to briefly touch on if you guys do stuff with the trades, especially automotive. That can get very, very dicey, very, very quickly, because there are so many OSHA rules and regulations on what kind of chemicals can be used, how it has to be cleaned up, how it has to be disposed of. So if you guys decide to allow that to be part of STEM. I would definitely take a really, really good long look at what certifications are required for that. Who you bring in to teach the students and making sure that the school can adequately dispose of any used oil or chemicals that are used, and also maintain proper tool safety. Because my dad is very particular about his tools. They are kept at specific temperatures. They are put specific places. And those tools can get very, very expensive very, very quick. So I would just be very mindful, especially if you have someone like from Frank Motors or somebody coming in. Those tools are those people's lives. Those are their children. And so I would just exercise a lot of caution and a lot of care when using those, because those do get pretty expensive, especially if they break.
Thank you. Good point. Anything, anybody else here?
Peter Oldt, interest ninety-seven Trash Food. As we heard at the library meeting. Large number of people, including myself, are very concerned about what the cost of the project would be, or having some understanding of what that is for our community. We heard a great deal about the reimbursement at a level, why we can't lose that reimbursement. But very little about what the actual cost of any of the options are. And from what I understand, what's online is that accurate. And from what I understand, what's online is not accurate. I came tonight, after I left the board selection meeting, trying to understand the cost of the essentially three options we have among us, and I still don't. Brianna, you're saying that you want the committee to understand what's going on, but it's not as clear as much. And an important starting point would be, what are those projected costs for those options? And why are we having so much difficulty getting any information about it? And I urge you to get that to the community, especially when the board selection is gonna be asking for people to apply to our school building committee. That would seem like a relevant piece of data to me. Thank you for your efforts on our behalf.
Thanks, well coming together. Um anyone, yes?
Hi, Jim Marshall, Fisher Elmer. I just want to say thank you guys for taking a deep look and reevaluating the ed spec. Many of the comments, I think, particularly Arthur's, are kind of on point tonight, that first and foremost, you need to develop a program that is gonna serve the educational needs of the community we have now. With a realistic um understanding of of flexibility for the immediate future, you're not gonna be able to anticipate every scenario or have every growth model. Um but really, the desire to create an efficient program, first and foremost, that serves the educational need and getting that that efficient program out to the school building committee to evaluate on behalf of the community is is critical. It needs to be a realistic project and a realizable project, so. Also just rely on the expertise of your design professionals that you're working with, because they are very tuned at sizing. And then flexibly accommodating space to be versatile, uh so your education level. The the reality is, this building committee is gonna be about data collection up until uh it gets to referendum, they're really, the decisions are pretty much well made, you guys are gonna come up with a an established program. That'll more or less dictate ultimately where the costs go. To serve the basic need of of the programs, the options in consideration are really kind of defined as well, right? This is a very different process than the first school building committee was, um because you're in a much more detailed place. So the work of the school building committee and to and to Mr. Tindrich's point. That work will be to develop the costs, there there isn't even a school building committee yet, um you got it, there needs to be in the process, it'll happen pretty quickly. But the school building committee will be developing these projects on the table. And developing the cost and getting the data for the town to make the decision um on what it is, what you guys need to focus on is, what is the really drop that essential program that we need to be able to educate our pedestrians appropriately. Um you're 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 really already there, um it's pretty close to efficiently as as you can be, um this is a program that has significant flow, so just keep doing what you're doing, um and give the process time to get there, because I really do believe that if the program stays efficient. There are opportunities for this project to be revenue neutral or, you know, in the long run, potentially even budgetary savings. With all factors, you know, in play, because this really is that dramatic indifference. Um potentially from a a reimbursement standpoint. With the due diligence um of the town and saving towards this project, there is the opportunity to offset a lot of a lot of them, there'll be financing structures will play, but it's a putting the cart before the horse, you gotta make sure you do it right, you're doing the due diligence, and getting to that point where the number is defensible, and that will take several months. That's, um but it will happen before referendum. Um and it will have to happen before, you know, for each of the options that the town is gonna be asked to choose from. It won't be the committee during, it'll be the, it'll be the town deciding which option they're going for. It's just everybody's, put the best effort forward to be an efficient and realizable solution, so, thank you guys for keeping up the pace, that time is gonna slip by really fast. So, good work.
Anybody else there in the room? And anybody else? Last call for President Speaker. All right. Okay, then we are ready to adjourn, need a motion. To adjourn. Um favorite attorney, I need twenty-eight, please. Samantha, are you still there?
Yes, I.